I've got one, thank you though.
I'm not going to allow any public comment.
Yes, well, now, if this meeting. Original basis is just.
We've got to deal with the motions first. Any new business?
What would you think if I just withdraw my? Go back to the original? If I withdraw, I'm going to have to go down there and just go back to your original.
Yeah.
I'm afraid this thing will get cloudy. Crap and all that. Give me a second. A second. Okay. I mean, shoot that.
Four, the ten. Okay.
But I'll give you everything that you. About Kevin, if I could see if I can make.
Okay, thank you. Which I know we're only right here.
Tecky's on his way. I think Kathy's gonna zoom in.
I'm here, Chris.
Okay, let's give Tecky a few more minutes.
And we've lost sound for some reason.
We're back here, that's it. That's the only thing we're in recess over.
Are we ready? We will. We will now reconvene the Hawkins County Board of Education. Regular scheduled meeting, this being June the eighth. June the eighth and approximately. Ten oh four, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Got some things to take care of this morning and we will just jump right into it. We were, Mr. Larkin had made an amendment to my motion. To garner. Some more information and if I may, I will read. The amendment to get everybody up to speed. Amendment to motion by Bob Larkin, seconded by Judy Trent. Keep the original motion the same with the caveat, no approval if the longevity of of the turf is less than fifteen years of use. Is that correct, Mr. Larkin? Uh, you had requested some information be gathered and I think our director has that information and he can present that at this time.
From a variety of turf history. Professionals that got back to me, um, eight to ten years is max on use if it's used for altering sports, if the field sits in the direct sun. There are some rare examples that it goes beyond the point of being able to use beyond ten. Uh, the material itself could hold up a maximum of fifteen. Uh, but because of the UV breakdown, which they've not been able to, uh, to do much about, uh, they said, uh, twelve years, uh, getting twelve years out of a field before testing shows it being out of tolerance would be the typical lifespan of being able to use the field now. Does it look decent? Does it look nice between twelve and fifteen? It could, but it starts to deteriorate rapidly at that point. If it's used limitedly for just a football purpose, for example. Uh, so that's where the fifteen years came from. Fifteen years would be a maximum for useful life of any turf at this current time. That's, that was the predominant, predominant answer I, I got. Industry guarantees are set at eight years, eight to ten years, depending on the, the manufacturer and the installer warranties. Those are prorated by year as, as you go through the life of the turf. Oh, just like a computer warranty or something like that, you get an extended warranty. It only covers certain things or a certain, a certain portion of the overall product price and value, uh, each year it, it diminishes. I don't know if that answered the question, but that's the information. I had to summarize from a variety of people I got a hold of Friday and, and, um, Sheddin and, and Thomas and others helped me, uh, track down information. That would be a summary of that.
Okay. Was that all the information that was requested, Mr. Larkin?
It is all the information. However, if he, uh, if he heard other information pertinent to the issue, you know, I think it's germane to what we're talking about. So if he has any, you know, input from others that's had experience, I'd love to hear that.
Uh, I did ask, uh, one, I'd asked three questions. Uh, number two was, uh, quality of turf and, uh. Answer I did get on that was that there's not much issue or there's not, uh, much difference between what the manufacturers are using other than, um, aisle weight. And if you think of a carpet, uh, the more dense the carpet, the more pile weight that carpet has, the more dense the fiber, each fiber, you add those together, that's the, it adds to the density of the carpet, much like, uh, much like it is with turf. Um, length of the turf blades vary from one and five eighths to two and a quarter. Lit film versus monofilament or a combination thereof, different types of fibers provide different performance characteristics. And the type of infill, meaning the ratio of sand to rubber or other substitute infills. Uh, there are many other characteristics as well. They use Shaw, this particular company baseline that we were looking at, uses Shaw that balances those characteristics to provide a high performance surface primarily for football, but also functional for soccer and lacrosse. One of the things that we had talked about with vendors when, uh, Coach Castle and, uh, the coaches over at Cherokee started on this project over a year ago was the, uh, realization that these fields are used for different purposes, not just football. So the bands out there, we have, we may have softball utilizing it for practices for conditioning. We may have basketball team out there running sprints. It, it just depends on what's going on as well as the community use, um, and that's controlled by us as well. But, uh, we wanted to get information on, uh, on turf that is able to withstand that multiple use, uh, sports and, and functions. But the durability, uh, to get ten to twelve to fifteen years out of it, that also weighs in on the amount of activity you allow on that field. Like I said in the first answer, uh, fifteen would be absolute it, uh, from baseline's perspective because of the UV breakdown and then pile on other, uh, activities that are, that are using that field and, and, uh, at length of time decreases. Forty-one ounces is a, is the pile weight the baseline is working with Shaw on right now. So it's a two inch and it's a forty-one ounce pile weight. Uh, the third question was a question of, uh, since they utilize source well, do we need to get bids for the turf install? Uh, he did reply back this morning using a buying cooperative shirt should eliminate the need for competitive bidding. Um, he said, we have to, uh, confirm that, but, uh, he did mention that TDEC SWPPP, which is a stormwater, uh, protection act or, or process we have to go through to get that part engineered for, uh, for this project, that, that could be done within a, uh, within a week's time, he said, and he's willing to do that at his cost, uh, given this, given the timeline we're looking at. So that was a response to the third question, which was. Whether or not we needed to send that out. I think those were the three questions that I gathered from the meeting. Not pertinent to the amendment, but just questions from the meeting.
Quality of the turf.
Uh, yeah, I tried to address those that came up through the meeting.
So that is the amendment. That answers the questions that Mr. Larkin had to his amendment.
That information, uh, Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to withdraw my amendment. Simplify the original.
Okay. And that is allowable by Robert's rules of order?
Yes.
Of that, so now we are back to the orig.
You got a second, you gotta get a second.
A second.
So we have a second, so. Her procedure, we are correct.
Got a vote on the withdrawal. If the withdrawal fails, it stays.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Jennifer, call the roll please. And let's clarify what we're.
Yeah.
We're clarifying on withdrawing Mr. Larkin's amendment to the motion. Yes means leave it in, no.
You're off. Yes, means take it out.
Yes means take it out. Oh. Jackie, Kathy, did you hear?
Yes.
Kathy, did you hear?
Yes, I did.
So you're clear on the instructions?
Yes.
Okay.
And.
Excuse me, who seconded that? Debbie Sheddin. Thank you. Okay. Call the roll please.
Carl's?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Frattick?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Larkins? Hiddon?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
The amendment is officially withdrawn. That brings us back to the original motion and I'll read it back into the record so everyone's on the same page. Motion made by Chris Christian, seconded by Tecky Hicks, to proceed with artificial turf at both high schools, VHS to be done this year, CHS in two to three years, with Matt getting estimates. With Matt getting estimates. Parenthesis, different types of turf and number of years of longevity, longevity, close parenthesis, that were requested from turf supplier. Give Matt and staff the authority to get started, baseline and Shaw turf, quality of turf to be looked at to get highest quality of turf, period. That would now be. The motion.
I'd like to make an amendment. And let me say first that I struggled with this, what to do for a school in my district. Fair to both schools. Uh, Volunteer and Cherokee. Uh, I've struggled because of the cost, because of the closure of two school or impending closure, uh, the teacher pay, the taxpayers, all of those. But in order to be fair for Cherokee as well as Volunteer, we need to, I think. Appropriate the money for both schools. I think that with, by doing this, we're sure proof that we're serious about what is needed. I also understand that Volunteer is what I call desperate need. For all to build. I looked at the cost of turf versus sod and the length of time that it would take for both of those. Odd is two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year, uh, or, uh, to pay for. Well, that sounds okay, but it takes eight weeks for those, that sod to grow into the ground in order to play. Eight weeks to me, uh, once we automatically put kids on the field, we're going to have trouble. It's not really grown in enough. So I understand also that controversy always on which is better, turf, sod, which are they safer on? On tax board. So I understand that are the best to get the best for our students here in Hawkins County. I also, uh. Eight to ten years is not a really long time when Mr. Larkins was really good for fifteen, but that's probably just not going to be existing. So saying all of that, I would like to make an. Motion for Mr. Herman Christian to appropriate money for the turf for both Volunteer and Cherokee. And as Volunteers' Field is in desperate need at this time. I'm suggesting we do first with, uh, Volunteer. There's not time to Cherokees at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-one. But that would put it in to. Uh, you play on sod this year. But also this allows, I think, that if we do have to replace sand, um, have that two bills at once. Comes down to both, uh, fields need to be placed. Don't go through this two at a time. As we're looking at one point, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, one knee. It's a lot of money and a lot. Falling, so, uh, with that said, I make that.
Okay, we have a motion. Let's recap the motion.
I mean, you talked for two or three minutes. All that's in the motion, that's a lot.
Okay. Let me do it.
Whatever the amendment to the motion.
I would like to. Appropriate money for turf for both Volunteer and Cherokee. It's just.
Oh.
It's, and that we, I think we need to put in, and we need to do Volunteer immediately if Cherokee following suit, but the money will be there and it will be getting down.
It is the motion.
No, we left out the money part.
Right.
We have to have the money part in.
There's no money part in any of it. It wasn't part of the original motion.
But it's an amendment into.
Right. Do you want to change the wording to the?
Where does, where does it go in the motion?
What about the money? Okay, let me do it again. I would like to make an amendment to the motion to appropriate one point two five oh 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 million for turf for both Volunteer and Cherokee.
I would got to read into the original motion.
At the beginning?
At the beginning.
Go on in, sir. How, because you got to get the wording right, it's got to be inserted.
Okay.
Right in with the same language, it's already there.
All right, let's go with this, let me read this.
But I guess the best thing to do is get a second first. Cause you, we discussed something and don't even have a second. And it may fail to begin with, you don't know.
Oh, no.
Got to have a second.
Are you, are you clear on the motion? Are we clear on the motion?
On the amendment?
Well, we can, we can determine, we can determine where it goes once we get the second.
A second.
Oh. Here is how will the motion read? Literally, not just off the cuff, but literally.
David's got this, I think.
Hey, David. Okay, can't we say, uh, to proceed with artificial turf at both high schools in the amount of one point two five million? VHS to be done this year, CHS at the end of the twenty-one playing season, with Matt getting estimates for different types of turf and number of years of longevity that were requested from the turf supplier. Give Matt and the staff the authority to get started, baseline and Shaw turf, the quality of the turf to be looked at to get the highest quality of turf.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
What in the event that the, uh, estimate is more than what we appropriated?
Right.
Can you do it?
Then does that, that not limit us to how much we could spend?
Excuse me, everybody, if you do the math. One point two five million? And Volunteers coming in at five eighty-five?
Five ninety-five.
Five ninety-five. And Cherokee's coming in at?
Six oh five.
Six oh five.
Six ninety. Six oh six.
Six oh six. And we're, Miss Trent's amendment was one point two five.
Right.
So there's, uh, better than four hundred thousand dollars built into that. Is that correct?
By my.
No.
I haven't put a calculator to it.
It's only.
Seven hundred is one point two million. If six hundred is one point two.
Right.
So five ninety-eight and six oh five is.
One point two five. It's fifty thousand, okay, sorry. So there's forty thousand built into that.
But now, if I'm correct, if I'm thinking correct, the first, when we originally started this project, the process, has that price not went up considerably up to today?
Cause that was four years ago.
Right.
Now, these numbers, if I'm not mistaken, are worst case scenario. And then savings on top of that, we'll have from our tax, using our tax number.
If we buy material ourselves directly.
Yeah, so there's going to be, so there's fifty thousand dollars built into it already. Then there could be twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars per field savings. So there's another sixty thousand. So we've got a thousand, a hundred thousand dollar savings built into this possibly.
Okay, well, I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't going to limit us and choke hold us at the end of two thousand twenty-one if we didn't have enough money appropriated.
I, I don't think that would be this board's intent at all.
Well, I'm not, I'm just saying I wanted to make sure that was not going to, a, a possibility that that could happen.
I understand. Uh, and I think that's why, I think Ms. Trent built in a little room in her amendment.
Oh, Jackie, did you think that they should have mower?
I didn't know, no, I don't know. I was just asking the question. Just to make sure that we would not be, like I said, in a, in a situation where, okay, now that two thousand twenty-one's run around and we come around and we've now got just this amount of money to use and it costs more.
Well, we're talking about a delay of.
Couple of years.
I'm afraid safe, six months?
Yeah.
Eight months? Best than a year?
Okay, I was just asking the question.
Okay.
I'm at Ms. Chairman, when's the time?
Uh. We have a motion, we have a second? Yes, please.
After our meeting this past Thursday, I think we've all had a chance to go home and think about it, do our research because some of us haven't educated ourselves as much as what we probably should have and we were about to make a big investment without having done that education. And I thank Mr. Christian and Mr. Hicks for taking their time to really look closely at the turf situation, not turf, but the sod situation, that volunteer and getting the right people involved in that process and, and maybe even using some of their own resources attempting to solve that issue, but it looks like it's going to be difficult. I think when the statement was made last fall, I believe it was. That the field was unsafe and I think that was a predicate for us not to play on the field for liability reasons when that word was placed out there. So I, I think the use of the field at Volunteer especially was out of the question from that point forward till today even, out to even practice on or even to have band marching or any, any activity one might hurt themselves, sprain an ankle. If that said, I've had a chance to think about this over the weekend as the rest of our board members have and, and, and the articles that I'm reading, and you can find an article to support either side of building, replacing sod or doing turf. For what I'm seeing from the unbiased medical professionals is, is that still turf is not the safest playing surface. Latest thing I saw from an August two thousand nineteen study by the university hospital said that fifty-eight percent more prone to lower extremity injuries from turf versus sod. Another study I saw was from the, um, NFL where the players thought that they were more prone to injuries from turf versus sod, and that's why many of the thirty-one stadiums have not gone to turf. Seventeen are still natural sod. NFL players thought that it shortened their careers. So that's one thing that I had looked at and given consideration to. The second thing that I would like to make a comment on is that we're in. Position of making a very important investment decision on behalf of the district and the county of one point two million dollars. And we don't know if we'll even be in school come August, the first of August, six weeks from now, much less playing contact sports, which it's looking like if we abide by the current social distancing, we're going to have to separate kids in first grade and kindergarten and on the bus and we haven't solved that problem yet. We don't know what phase three or phase four, where are we at? Mr. Hicks, we're face of the governor's.
Phase two.
We're phase two of governor's plan and he has yet to come out with phase three, which will be a, um, direction we'll need to follow with the medical professionals and the regional health department. That's number two. The other thing is, two, two things in my third point is, as Ms. Trent said, we had just made a very important decision to close two schools to save money and better use our resources in Hawkins County and hopefully provide a better quality of education. It's the governor's most recent statement that he will or may, I don't know the status of the two percent cost of living adjustment for our teachers, it looks like that is in jeopardy or it's maybe been withdrawn from his budget. How are we going to help our employees with that two percent? Are we going to just say, okay, bite the bullet during this time when spouses have been furloughed and? Everybody here knows what's going on in our society today. and everybody here knows what's going on in our society today? I have a real problem with trying to justify in my own mind without having done a lot of research and what little I've done so far tells me that it's not the wisest move to make at this time. I'll say this in summary and conclusion. I would like to see a turf field, the right turf field at both schools. Financially, I don't think it's the right time. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Lark. Go ahead.
Okay. After our meeting Thursday night, I would concur a lot with what Mr. Larkins said, but I take the responsibility of spending this type of money for our system very seriously, as I know each of us do up here. I, Friday all day, I contacted eight neighboring school systems and I've talked with five, all of these have turf, and I will share with you what I found out. Sevier County, they have five fields, all turf, all put on through AstroTurf. Gatlinburg Pittman, however, paid for, the city school system there paid for their own. So Sevier County paid for four football fields. And right now, I think they're, they're happy with the, the job that they got. Now I have a call into Sean Witten at Elizabethan, I have, he said he would call me back and I haven't heard back from him. And I have a call into Hamblin County and I have not heard back from him. Nashville, Metro Nashville, all sod, no turf in Nashville. Greenville City has turf put in by AstroTurf. They just had to get it replaced and were out of pocket, close to 100,000. I just got off the phone this morning with Maryville City, Scott Blevins. They have a baseball field in turf and they have the football field in turf, done by AstroTurf. It was replaced three years ago and they paid extra to get an upgrade on the turf. And they have gone with, on the pellets, rather than being the black pellets, the rubberized, they have gone to one that's actually made by Nike and it's ground up from the soles, the rubber soles of shoes. And he said it looks almost like the colors of Fruit Loops, you know, when you get down and look at it. But it is supposed to be 10 degrees cooler. And, and he said that they're happy with their installation. One thing that he's noticed, as far as practice fields, they don't need them. The band can go on there and practice, other sports can go on there and practice. And with the turf in place, they're not wearing down the grass. I have a call into Knox County, Chris To, and I have not heard back from him. I did speak this morning with Lee McDavid at Kingsport City Schools for quite a while. They have just put down two fields last year, eight-year warranty, field turf, put theirs down. They did purchase a $9,000 rake and a $6,000 blower that are much needed for the maintenance of the turf. They also spray it with disinfectant, not every, not after every game, but probably I would gather to say maybe once a month. They, when they were putting these two new fields down, they had tandem trucks and they took out 550 loads of dirt with tandem trucks, hauled off. His advice was don't, don't shortcut. The drainage for a turf is different than the drainage for a regular field. So anything that we have put in place right now at volunteer to help the drainage, that's going to be obsolete when they bring turf in. It's a totally different type of drainage. I think when they put in their original turf, he said they spent a million to, a million two, and that was 12 years ago. And 12 years ago, they drove to Asheville and watched a system being put in. This past year, they drove to, a group from Kingsport City, drove to North Georgia, toured the field turf facility to see how it was made, and then they took them over to North Georgia University and they got to actually speak with the people there at the university about their field, which was also put in by field turf. So a lot of, a lot of background work went into, went into that. A lot of time spent on just getting the numbers, talking, getting more information. And honestly, you know, to, to think that we might have this in by the time school starts is unrealistic. We would have had to, had everything approved, had the cuts made for that field and, and the order in, and still I don't know that we could get it in, in time. You know, as far as doing both schools, if, if we did both schools, I know volunteer is definitely very needful right now of something. But I, I think something needs to be said, if we're planning on doing a second school, we need to make sure of the economic climate at that time. We need to make sure that we're going to have the money to support that second school. And, and we don't, we don't know that. I would concur with Mr. Larkins. We've not heard yet whether we're going to have sports this fall. We don't know whether, if sports are played, there're going to be any fans there in the stands. I, I can't go along with jumping into something this quickly without doing some more due diligence research on the board's part. And that's, those are my feelings.
Thank you. We do have a motion, we do have a second, is there any further discussion? If none, Ms. Jennifer, call the roll please. Ken, wait.
We voted on the amendment?
Yes.
We did.
Yes, we did.
We did.
Over.
Oh, the amendment.
We voted on the amendment.
Okay.
That's what we're doing right now.
Yeah, we're voting on the amendment. We have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion on the amendment. So Ms. Jennifer, call the roll please.
No. Larkins? Hicks?
Yes.
Frattick?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Harles?
Yes.
Motion passes. Amendment passes. So now we vote on the entire motion.
I think the motion would be...
Yes, can you read that back for the record?
Okay, the motion is, "To proceed with artificial turf at both high schools in the amount of 1.25 million. VHS to be done this year, CHS at the end of the 21 playing season, with Matt getting estimates, different types of turf and the number of years of longevity that were requested from the turf supplier. Give Matt and the staff the authority to get started baseline and Shaw turf, the quality of turf to be looked at to get the highest quality of turf."
That would be the motion. We've done, we already have a second, so it's up for vote. I'm just wanting to make sure we're following the proper procedure. Are we ready to vote? Ms. Jennifer, call the roll.
Harles?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Frattick?
Yes.
Hicks?
Yes.
Larkins? Edden?
No.
Trent?
Yes.
The motion passes. With that being said, we're done with that. I would like to put before the board a budget amendment for this current budget that we allocate 1.25 million to be drawn from our general purpose fund.
At votes, then we just...
I would make the motion to amend to include 1.25 million.
A second.
We have a motion, we have a second, is there any further discussion? If not, Ms. Jennifer, call the roll.
Yes.
Edden?
No.
Larkins? Hicks?
Yes.
Frattick?
Yes.
Christian?
Yes.
Harles?
Yes.
The motion passes. Is there anything else before this board?
I have something. Okay. Back on August the 11th, 2011, I'm going to take you back. I did some research on our board meetings. And I wrote a policy on the use of the iPad for our board. This is the paperwork for this board meeting for Thursday night, which almost constitutes a ream of paper for each one of us. Now, our secretary, Jennifer, hand-delivered mine to me at my door, with car. I don't know how many others she did that. I would not, I would hate to know what the cost of mailing this out would be. And this is not the first time I have brought this up. We need as a board to be more proficient, more conservative in being able to use technological devices. We're asking our kids, all ages, to be able to use an iPad, to be able to use a computer, to communicate on them, to, to do distance learning, especially right now when we're in this COVID-19 situation. Yet, we're still bogged down in paper. I don't think we're sending the right message to our children. And if we as board members need help on learning to navigate an iPad, I'm sure our department would be happy to help. But I can't sit back and look at this and, and not realize that we need to be moving forward as a board with learning to use technology. And thank you.
I totally agree with Debbie on this issue.
And so do I.
Okay, we'll work on getting that done. Anything else, ladies and gentlemen?
We adjourn.
We adjourn, thank you very much.